Sure your microphone is on, even though you're, um, you can hear me. The recording is not working as properly, so you have to speak a little bit louder. The same would go for the public. When you go to the mic, please make sure you speak directly in the mic and as clearly as you can. And I'm gonna need a minute to get ready. How many, sir?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the regular meeting of Suntay County Council for Tuesday, May twenty-fifth. Order. Ms. Bean, would you please give us an invocation? May we all stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our dear God, help my Father, we do acknowledge you as the one and whom we live, move, and have our being. We would not be able to be here today if it were not for you. And we thank you for being the master of the universe and for being the owner of everything that we have. We thank you for blessing us with much. And we thank you for giving us a mind to share what, what little we have with every source that we, that comes before us. Help us to be mindful of our speech and our conduct. And when we do wrong, forgive us for all of our wrong. Help us learn how to love and to help our speech seasoned with thought. And as we move through this agenda, help us to take every item as you would help us to do it. Thank you for being the ultimate provider. And we thank you for giving us the means by which to edu-, to give money to education so that they can be able to serve their purposes well. These are all blessings we thank and ask in your name. Amen.
Will be led, will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Reverend William Bill Hartley from Council District Three, represented by Councilman Jimmy Byrd.
Bill, behalf of County Council, I appreciate you coming to see me. I appreciate most of your service for our country. And I can see by your value, very active still in this day. And I have a wonderful family, by the way. I know you personally, so on behalf of County Council, in the citizens' hands, you bring your service and you bring the amazing.
Great, I appreciate it, sir. Thank, thank you for this honor and the privilege of standing, of standing in the Pledge of Allegiance with you. Now, will everybody put their right hand over their heart? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Branding, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes.
We're for pro.
Sir.
It's been moved and properly seconded, and we approve the agenda for tonight's meeting and discussion. Here in all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is approval of a minutes for my regular meeting, both for Pro or Mr. Chairman. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Eames is seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Minnesota group. Okay, RZ twenty-one oh four, forty-three five U.S. Highway fifteen South, Ms. Rue.
RZ twenty-one oh four is a request by CDP Suntay Five LLC as authorized agent. Rezone approximately one point seven-two acres of property from agricultural conservation to neighborhood commercial. It is located at the southeastern corner of the intersection of Country Springs Road and Highway fifteen South. Uh, the lot is heavily wooded as it is today, and just to kind of put it into perspective for you, it is, uh, this is kind of zoomed out a half mile in all directions. It is predominantly residential development in the area with very little commercial service. Uh, this indicated it predominantly is under agricultural conservation out in that area as well. The reason that this request is coming forward is because the applicant does seek to develop a general merchandise store of less than eleven thousand square feet on the property. When we look at rezoning requests, we look at the comprehensive plan designation. In this instance, it is in the rural development planning area. Normally, the rural development planning area would not be supportive of rezoning for intense commercial uses, but it is supportive at key intersections of commercial zoning that a neighborhood supporting, such as this request. So as I said, it is a request to rezone one point seven-two acres from agricultural conservation neighborhood commercial to develop an eleven thousand square foot or smaller, uh, general merchandise store that is a conditional use in the neighborhood commercial zoning district with finite review criteria. Um, it is located at a key intersection in a predominant residential area, but on a major thoroughfare, U.S. Highway fifteen South is a major peripheral. It use adjacent residentially used agricultural zoning to north, south, east, and west. This is what the property looks like today. This photo is kind of pulled off of the internet, it's a little bit easier to get photos, why don't you sit up standing in the middle of the road? Um, but it is a heavily wooded lot. There is some residential development immediately to the back of it, uh, in the form of a local home residence. And it is in general alignment with the comprehensive plan. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. We also do have the applicant here to speak on behalf of the request.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to accuse myself of discussions and the... The question is, Ms. Rue, man. As stated on the agenda, uh, we will have a public hearing prior to taking action. Uh, I now declare public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against RZ twenty-one oh four, please proceed to the microphone and please state your name for the record. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. One second. You have a motion to approve second reading? You have a motion and a second to approve second reading and a discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? RZ twenty-one oh four, second reading is approved.
Our next item on the agenda?
Okay, Ms. Rue, man, RZ twenty-one oh eight, ten forty-five Cockroo Road.
The applicants for this request are Joseph and Kristen Brown as authorized agents for the property owner. I believe that Mr. and Ms. Brown above here, this is a request to rezone approximately nineteen acres of land from heavy industrial to agricultural conservation. Uh, as you can see, it's actually comprised of multiple parcels. These are all properties that are owned by the family in question, and it does represent their residential enclave within the lack of industrial park. The residential development in this area actually predates the countywide zoning. And so in nineteen ninety-nine, when we went to countywide zoning, this area that's in question was owned heavy industrial, although it's being residentially used. Um, as you may know, in a heavy industrial zoning district, single-family residential or any type of residential development is prohibited. Um, they wish to, to rezone primarily a part of two zero eight zero 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 three zero five six, which is one of the larger tracts on the western side of this area, uh, because they want to build a house that's adjacent to their family. Um, as I said, heavy industrial zoning doesn't allow residential development, but agricultural conservation does, and in the AC zoning district, um, it doesn't negatively impact the ability to develop industrial property because it doesn't impact setbacks on adjacent industrial property. So as part of this request, uh, the family listed all of the land that they own that wasn't currently zoned to allow a single-family residential, which is how they were using it, and opted to include all of their properties in this request, which is why it's almost nineteen acres in size. Uh, it is in a priority economic development area, which generally is not supportive of presidential zoning designations. The statute believes that requesting to rezone this property agricultural does preserve the utility and usefulness of the adjacent industrial zoning while still allowing the family members that own homes in that area, as well as Mr. and Ms. Brown, to construct a new home on their family land. So in balancing the wants and needs of both parties, both the industrial parks as well as the current property owners, we do believe that AC zoning is probably appropriate. Uh, just to put it in the context, there is one small enclave of general residential where there was existing residential development, but for some reason, it did not continue the request to include all of the other houses. So this reflects a lot of that issue. Uh, it is, uh, primarily, it looks like a residential road if you drive down it right now because it does houses and it's heavily wooded. Immediately across the street from them, although it doesn't have any buildings on it, it is actually the field that, um, that chicken plants sprays their water on. So it is being industrially, industrially used, and it will not be constructed on unless they change how they deal with their water. And then just another look of property. Planning Commission does recommend approval, as I said. Um, it was historically residential in nature, but the agricultural zoning will allow them to have a by right use as residential, but it will balance the rights of adjacent industrial uses. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions on the school? I guess most of the surrounding industries were notified.
We actually talked to the development board, and they did not have any issue with it. And, um, although it's not required by ordinance, we do mail a courtesy notice out to all property owners within five hundred feet, as well as posthumous property. And I did not hear back from anybody that's an adjacent property owner.
Okay, we also are having a public hearing on RZ twenty-one oh eight, uh, prior to us taking action on second reading. So I now declare public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against RZ twenty-one oh eight, ten forty-five Cockroo Road, please proceed to the microphone. Please state your name for the public. Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Group of approval?
Sir.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Approve second reading and a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of approving second reading? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next is RZ twenty-one oh six, and as stated on the agenda, prior to discussion and action, the reading of RZ twenty-one oh six. There will be a motion to rescind the prior action taken at the meeting on May ninth, twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one to defer third reading on this item. Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to be right.
Mr. Chairman, um, having been called off, I was, uh, I'll just inform the council that section six dash twenty-nine seven twenty of the South Carolina Code is a made legislation that allows local governments engaged in zoning. That section requires that zoning regulations be uniform for each class or kind of building, structure, or use throughout each zoning district. That section also provides that one method may be used in a local government zoning ordinance is conditional use. That's in quotes, and it's in quotes in the statute. Condition uses that impose conditions, restrictions, or limitations on a permitted use, but in addition to the restrictions applicable to all the others in the district. However, the conditions, restrictions, or limitations must be set forth in the text of the zoning ordinance. Neither the enablement legislation nor our zoning ordinance contains a requirement that a zoning applicant meet with adjoining property owner. Consequently, having a requirement that one particular applicant hold a meeting with the adjoining property owner exceeds the authority delegated by the County Council by the General Assembly through the enablement legislation.
Chairman? Are you, um, Mr. Bryant, do I have a motion? No move. It's like a, it's been moved and properly seconded, that we rescind the motion that was taken on our meeting, is that what you press third reading? Any discussion, just like?
Counsel, why wasn't I addressed to this by you personally beforehand?
Mr. Chairman, I wasn't aware of any action that was taken during last, uh, last meeting that required an applicant to hold a meeting in order to have third reading on the action. I'll, I'll admit it, it caught me by surprise. And I'll also acknowledge that my instincts told me that something not right about it, that I couldn't articulate what that was, how. Now, immediately after the meeting, the terms, uh, contract zoning was mentioned. As you know, contract zoning does not allow itself to run under a legal legislation or otherwise. And upon further research and deliberation, I concluded this was not exactly contract zoning, but it did exceed the authority that's been delegated to the council by the General Assembly. And that's where I've come to this, that's why I've come on this issue.
Mr. Chairman, Counselor did not answer my question. My question again, Counselor, is why did you not contact me within my district? I made the motion. You should have contacted me. The absence of you contacting me is unprofessional and is disrespectful. And I don't expect counsel of Suntay County to operate in that fashion.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I believe, uh, Mr. Washington was landing on a phone call, and based on my conversation with her, she tried to connect me, was watching on the phone call. And she told me later on that he disconnected and he would contact me. And I waited for the call and everything. That was my understanding. Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Blanding did a very good job of trying to explain a legal situation, and Ms. Blanding may practice law outside of County Council, but that's not what she does for us. Counselor should have contacted me, and that is what I expect him to do. Whenever there's an issue in my district. Also, and just to, and just to go further, luckily, Mr. Chairman, the developer, and by the way, I chose not to use other terms when I made the motion because I wasn't trying to kill the deal. I could have tabled it. I could have postponed it to a, to a definite date, but I chose not to do either of those things. I chose a soft approach because I wanted to work it out again, which is why counsel should have communicated to me directly. Him asking Ms. Blanding to call me about a legal issue is absolutely unacceptable.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to clarify, I didn't ask Mr. Blanding to call Mr. Washington. I was informed by Ms. Blanding that she had a conversation with Mr. Washington, and she tried to connect me to Mr. Washington.
That's not true.
And because I was out of the office.
That's not true.
I'm sorry, I have the floor. I have the floor.
If I wanted your phone number, and I responded by no. You are not telling the truth. That is not what happened. And if you didn't talk to Ms. Blanding and hear the conversation, you do not know. So you are out of order.
You are out of order, Mr. Washington, Mr. Bryant has the floor.
Mrs. Blanding explained to me that she had a conversation with Mr. Washington, and that she tried to connect me because I was out of my office at the time. Mr. Washington decided he would get in touch with me later. That's what she told me. That's what she told me.
Not true.
That's the conversation that Blanding and I had.
I don't care what conversation you had, it's not true. Ms. Blanding asked me if I wanted your number. I declined your number because I felt like it was your professional responsibility to contact me, and that's what I expected.
There is a clarification, as I too was submitted, or at least what was told by us, by the clerk, the exact same explanation that, um, our attorney provided tonight. That's exactly how we were told. We were really looking for the conversation, anticipating a conversation from you.
I was.
If you had any questions or concerns, so we were in a position, and I'll, I'll take full responsibility. We were in a position, we were under the impression that if you had any questions or concern, that you would notify us, and we were, when we didn't receive that, we assumed, and maybe that's the wrong thing to do, but we assumed that you understood the process, and we would go ahead and identify this tonight. But there was no purposeful intent to leave you out of the conversation. We thought that we reached out and opened the door for any conversation if you had one. And when we didn't receive one, we just assumed you understood what was going on.
Well, I want to be clear. If there is an issue in my district and it has a legal connotation to it, I want to hear from the attorney. I always enjoy visiting with, with Ms. Blanding. She has very good advice, but in this case, legal counsel should have reached out to me, bottom line. And Mr. Chairman, if I could just have a couple more minutes, I also want to report to counsel that the community did meet with the developer on last Tuesday, and we were able to make some progress. And the community expressed a number of things that they would like to see at the location, um, to reduce, um, any issues that may arise, uh, from locating the Dollar General there. And I'll just share them with you, it's only a few. They'd like the open and closed time to be from nine a.m.
Mr. Washington, do you hold on that? We actually have the reading, third reading laid down, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Shouldn't we know that before we vote, Mr. Chairman?
No.
Oh, the defer, and then we'll come back to that. Back with.
We have a motion and a second to rescind the motion to, um, defer a third reading. I'm sorry.
The motion was made that defer a third reading is a such a time to develop a meeting with the neighbors. But that's not what the motion states, that's not what the motion intended was, that's where you go about it. I'm just trying to figure the legal. I understand what you're saying, legal, we've been there before, we've had this conversation before. But the way it's written, minutes, then, you know. I'll just, I'll go on a question, talk to you later, however. But it's a call question.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. We've got a motion and a second to, to rescind, to defer a third reading of RZ twenty-one oh six. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now come down to third reading of RZ.
Motion to approve third reading. I'd like a motion to approve third reading. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the third reading of RZ twenty-one oh six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I mentioned earlier, the community met with the developer, all of the residents, uh, well, most of the residents to the north and the west were there finally. We had to meet the people that were really impacted. The developer brought his plans, he brought drawings, he brought pictures of other locations for the community to decide what they liked, what they didn't like. And it was a, a good meeting once we got it going. The things that the community requested was that the store be open from nine a.m. to eight p.m. They requested that the lighting on the store go down and not out so it curbs their private homes. They'd like to see evergreen trees planted around the back fence of the property so as to block the property out from their homes. They'd like to see the property studded in the front. They'd like the location to be a brick location. Um, they'd like the storefront to face two sixty-one and the Sunoco Station, which is exactly opposite the road across Clare Mount Road. They'd like a six-foot fence with green liners in it. And the last thing that they requested was that the store not have one of those large pole signs, Mr. Chairman, with family dollar on it. Now, the developer said he may not be able to deliver the large pole sign, but he was gonna work on that, and the community feels like that's extremely important to maintain the integrity of the community. But those were the details that, uh, we worked out. And I think the developer is here today. I'm sure most of you saw the email this afternoon from Ms. Floyd, um, who states that, um, the lady who was there who owns the land, which is Shirley and Avan, she attended the meeting. The residents thought that was a conflict of interest. Um, they also feel like she's been misleading. Ms. Floyd goes on this, I, I don't know the procedures and rules by which counsel operates in accepting testimony, but there should be evidence to back up claims made by those who testify. The County Council made decisions on what is said by others without fact checking. People's lives are affected by these decisions, and I think counsel should duly know this. And, Mr. Chairman, at the appropriate time, I'd like for that particular concern to be passed on to the Public Safety Committee, which I chair, to figure out if there are some things that we can put in place to address these kinds of things from happening to home. That concludes my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Chairman, I understand what Mr. Washington's saying, but, you know, I've had conversations with this developer several times. One recently in my district, which is right next to a residence, and they worked out, um, a comfortable compromise, yes, between the residents who live right next to the residence. So I know there are good stewards when they're talking to the neighbors. I can vouch for that. We got two in my district right now, right next to residents. One, and we discussed this because we, we talked yesterday about the one in my district. The what? The what? Well, he, I talked. The what, Mr. Google, I'm not speaking to Mr. Google. Okay. It was the honor of the life. Okay, well, I'm talking to Google, I'm talking to him. He, he, and he vouched for this one on Power Road, and he, we talked about this resident right next to one on Power fifteen South. And so he, they, he will work with the residents at any time. And he does, he's done it every time.
Mr. Google conducted himself, that's what you, you're correct.
We have a motion and a second to approve third reading. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Third reading is approved. Next item on the agenda, ordinance twenty-one nine fifty-two, third reading. Mr. Bryant?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Counselor, as you know, the, uh, Hartland will help to build a nursing home for, uh, veterans, and part of that, we need to do several things. One is to extinguish an option that we have on properties that they want. Another is to give them access to Airport Road. Uh, another is to, um, participate in releasing the acreage funds for street coverage. All that's covered in, on this twenty-one.
The purple second.
This is a public hearing as well? This is very recent, isn't it? The chairman is? Yes, yes, this is a, this is a public hearing. I'm sorry. Okay. I now open the floor for a public hearing on ordinance number twenty-one nine fifty-two. Anyone's willing, uh, wanting to speak for or against ordinance twenty-one nine fifty-two, please proceed to the microphone. Hearing none, I have a motion and a second to approve twenty-one nine fifty-two. All opposed? We got a motion and a second to approve third reading on ordinance number twenty-one nine fifty-two. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ordinance twenty-one nine fifty-two, third reading is approved. Uh, we have second reading for ordinance number twenty-one nine fifty-one, and we also have a public hearing prior to taking action. Mr. Nixon?
Chair, Councilmember, good evening. Uh, ordinance twenty-one nine fifty-one, better known as our capital bond. Ordinance is the request to issue the sale of general obligation bond. Ordinance is the request to issue the sale of general obligation bonds to address our three and a half million dollar capital request. I believe clerk has put those items on the board for us. You can see that the majority are the large expenses in those items are the vehicles for the shares department, the public buildings, renovations to a number of our county public buildings, as well as some I.T. additions. The other, this is part again of our normal capital bond related to the fifteen mills that we have on the tax bill related to bond issuance. Certainly available to ask any questions at public hearing.
I now declare a public hearing open for ordinance twenty-one nine fifty-one. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this ordinance, please proceed to the microphone. Hearing none, we have a motion.
They approve.
Second. The move is properly seconded that we have second reading for ordinance twenty-one nine fifty-one. All in favor? All opposed? Twenty-one nine fifty-one is approved. We have second reading and a public hearing on ordinance number twenty-one nine fifty. Mr. Nixon.
Chair, yes, this is our county general fund operating budget proposed for next year. Again, this is second reading. We have, I'm pleased to announce that we have a balanced budget proposed to council tonight at fifty-two million four hundred and seventy-seven thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars for the general fund revenues and expenditures. This budget includes rollback mills, as it has been a reassessment year. The rollback millage is down from the eighty-six point three, or here it places, point three, down to eighty point nine. And that will, you know, for the mill value of three hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars. We have also built into this budget a two-mill increase, one mill for the litter program and one mill for additional personnel and salary adjustments. Major components of this budget include a three percent cost of living for the employees, roughly three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a one percent increase in retirement cost, two point six percent increase in health insurance, approximately ninety thousand dollars. Again, an increase in some I.T. maintenance and upgrades of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. An increase to support the other agencies, roughly sixty-two thousand dollars. Again, I mentioned the litter program and the additional personnel, actually, three thousand. Those are major components of this second request for county operating budget.
Okay, I declare the public hearing for ordinance twenty-one nine fifty. Be open, anyone wishing to speak for or against ordinance twenty-one nine fifty, please proceed to the microphone. Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Have a motion to approve and defer. They approve. Second. The move is properly seconded that we have second reading on ordinance twenty-one nine fifty. Any discussion?
Yes. Could you, could you go over the laws again, while you're?
Councilman Baker, what viewers is referring to is the local option sales tax credit. That's what's applied to the tax bill on behalf of the taxpayers or something. It's an estimate. While we can't tonight present the exact number, but we do know that there will be a larger credit applied to the tax bill so that the revenue, the millage increase will be softened by credit that will be applied to the tax bills. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I wanted to ask this during our budget workshop, but the school budget sort of dominated the whole meeting. Just wanted to ask, and I contacted county administrator concerning the rural community centers. And this is something that's near and dear to my heart because I represent the rural areas and not only my district, and I think it's true for all county council members, that we are elevated by the district, but we represent the rural county. And so therefore, I'm concerned about the rural county, especially the rural areas that it's so difficult to give them, make the returns for their taxes and we try to give them services. But one area of difficulties that I have discovered was that there is a little disparity between how the, I'll say among the rural facilities, how we have to be charged for facility rentals. And then the process is very difficult. And I just wanted to ask, the revenue that is generated from the fees that are charged to the community centers, those revenues included in the budget to help balance this budget? That's my first question.
Yes, ma'am, they are.
They are. Okay, and so that poses a little problem. Okay, and so my next question then is, how is the form that generated, you know? And let me tell you what I'm getting at. Okay. It used to be where the community, the citizens that live out in the rural areas and especially Shallow and the Southus Town, community centers, when they need to rent the facility for a wedding, a wedding reception, family reunion, or those kind of things, they would go to the community center, ask for the form, fill it out, and then write a check or give a money order for their rental. And that has been working. But now the process is kind of so difficult. And our budget is a projected budget. But if you're projecting it based on previous income that has been coming in, those fees that have been coming in, that's going to decrease unless this process is changed. I was contacted over the weekend by someone who wanted to rent the Shallow Community Center in office for her spouse, who is turning ninety-five years old. Ended up doing it myself. And so I paid, I used my card and paid the fifty dollars. And I found out that if she withdraws, then I'll lose twenty-five dollars because there's a processing fee. And then, and then I was told that she will have to pay seventy-five dollars per hour for renting the building, you know, and the minimum hours that she can use this for, four hours. So seventy-five dollars per hour. And then, and on top of that, when she goes there to set it up, she has to start at that moment and pay thirty-one dollars for security. Okay, now, I live by the Shallow. And if we have an event at Shallow, which we've always had for years, we don't, if I'm there, everybody's respecting, we don't have that many problems out there. If we were to notify the sheriff department, look, even when we used to have things for the children, look, we're having this event at the community center. We do have your officer who is on patrol to just come and frequent the place, drive through, and you better believe your presence will keep everything under control. I think it's a financial burden to charge those rural people thirty-one dollars an hour for an officer. They'll be just almost being paid for nothing because they won't be needed. Very seldom do we have anything. And I'm saying, oh, this is, the process really needs to be changed. And then, and I think that the cost that is involved is really insurmountant. We don't have very many ways to give, to give services to the rural people. So the least that we can do is make the facility available for them, not at that cost. So I started asking about all the facilities. And I found out that the Mill Creek facility has one flat rate. And from eight o'clock in the morning to six in the evening, all they have to pay is a hundred and fifty dollars. And their security fee doesn't start until the actual event starts. And so that's a discrepancy, a disparity between them and the rural, the other facilities. And then when I went online, I was able to find the form for Hatria, the sports place, that building. But I was not able to find a form for any other ones. The only thing that's on the website right now is that difficult process of finding it, joining it, you have to join it, and then go through the process of securing. You've got to pay before it will allow you to go to the next step. And I know that those people, we can hardly get the kids to get on the internet to do virtual learning. I know those people, they're not gonna, they're not going to do it. So I don't know what the solution is, but I just wanted all of my colleagues to hear this. This is, you know, I know that we are in a digital age, but we, the rural areas just haven't gotten to that. A lot of people just haven't gotten to that point yet. And that needs to be changed. So I'm just asking that we not project this budget depending on these fees from these community centers, or unless, just reduce it down to what Pinewood, that Mill Pond facility, what they charge. Maybe that's, that would be the negotiation. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lady McGannin, for bringing that to our attention. And I'm just kicking around some numbers over here. And at Mill Creek, if the flat rate is a hundred dollars from ten to six, that's a hundred dollars for the rate. Two hundred and forty-eight dollars for security, plus the fifty-dollar fee, which will be three hundred and forty-eight dollars. If you go to community center in my district, Racton Creek, for example, or Delane, it's going to be a fifty-dollar deposit. For four hours, it's going to be three hundred dollars. And for security, it's going to be a hundred and twenty-four dollars, totally, four hundred and seventy-four dollars. If you do it for eight hours, it's going to be six hundred dollars, plus the fifty-dollar registration, plus the two hundred and forty-eight for security, which totals eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And, Mr. Chairman, I'm sure you were not aware of this, because I'm sure you would have addressed it before now. But this is something that we can't address tonight, right here. It does not require an informal or formal committee like we're doing with Litter. We can take the opportunity to resolve this right here tonight because there is a very large discrepancy just based on the numbers. And I agree with the council lady about the registration online. A lot of folks in the rural areas don't have broadband, they don't have internet service. So it's difficult for them. They live close to the centers. And so they need to be able to go in, register, and take care of their business as opposed to doing it online. They may not even have a computer. And if they don't, then they have to come downtown to the Magnolia Center. So we definitely need some uniformity here, and that's something that we can address. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add, with those decisions like that, I would appreciate that we are allowed to be a part of them. You know, when, because I learned that the fee really used to be fifty dollars. And I don't know if county councils established that, you know, if we approved that. But then it was increased because of the pandemic, to seventy-five dollars an hour. And like I said in committee, I don't want to sound like a tickling symbol, but this is near to my heart. I care about those people out there, and I know how this would affect them. And I, and I ask, I'm asking for help.
Mr. Chairman, remember county council, however, having anything to do with dollars or tax bills, you know, what I would like to ask. Administrator, if you all of us would make some nice remarks.
Mr. Chairman? Um, I am, I am of the opinion that there are certain things that council can and should take care of when it arises. We don't always need to pass things off. That creates additional government, big government. But in this case, I'll acquiesce and ask the administrator to come back with a more balanced plan.
Mr. Nixon, you want to address these?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman, a couple of them. First, I hate to correct the council members in the public forum, but it's not a flat rate at Mill Creek. Most rentals out there will have, so I understand what you saw on paper, and I'm not going to discredit that. But there are additional charges for each other addition to have. There's not a full-time personnel at the community center, so there's other costs built into the community centers. What we do, and what we've done in the past, is try to market our community centers based on space availability with similar type functions in the community. And we do prorate it based on rural community. Certainly, we welcome the opportunity. We don't have all the information tonight, so we can't sit here and have a full conversation, an informed conversation on this topic. But certainly, if it's something you want to address and be a part of, we're more than happy to carry that. We can adjust it at any time, even during the budget. If you want to bring this back, any time of the year, we're welcome to review it and change it. I will say that the revenues that are built into this budget are conservative estimate. They're not overestimated. So any impacts that might occur because of COVID, we took that, taken that into consideration as far as the revenue projections. And we don't have to go in in this budget process and adjust any revenues based on proposed uses. But again, we're here as a tool for county council. We want to be a resource for you. If you want to have a conversation about any of this, make good adjustments, we're more than welcome. I would just like to have, make sure that we have our professional staff that deals with this on a regular basis and afford them the opportunity to come and explain a position, and then council make a decision. That's all I ask.
Mr. Chairman, didn't Mill Creek a hundred dollars an hour, certain time a hundred and twenty-five dollars after that? And the people who buy another rent place, they pay a thousand, twelve thousand a day.
That's correct.
Plus the thirty-one dollars an hour for security. So it's a hundred and a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour.
I could only go on.
I understand.
You know.
Yeah, but the old people who rent that many, many times, they tell me they pay sometimes fourteen, fifteen hundred dollars a day for that facility, because that's.
I could just say one thing, and Mr. McGinnis ditched there with me earlier about her concerns with the trying to redstone line. I also tried to do it just to see for myself, ran into the same block, and we've asked our I.T. supposedly, and the answer, the short answer I got was unless you had the right, I think it was Google Chrome, and we got our I.T. director back here now, unless you had that software, it would block it or make it really difficult to get through. But if you had Google Chrome, it just plugged. But that's something we need to work on because not everybody has Google Chrome. And that's what we challenged our I.T. director to work on, to try to make, or use a friendly. And then you're right, there should always be that option to where you can actually come in and pay. We get that, and certainly we'll make sure that's a part of it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the budget ordinance, second reading.
Mr. Chairman, I have some comments, please. This second reading includes the two mills for the school. We want to be discussing that later. Okay. All right, yeah.
We got a motion and a second to approve ordinance twenty-one nine fifty, known as the budget ordinance. Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Second reading on the budget ordinance, twenty-one nine fifty, is approved. Next item on the agenda is ordinance twenty-one nine fifty-three. If we go back, we've already taken care of twenty-one nine fifty-two, twenty-one nine fifty-one, twenty-one nine fifty. Now we have ordinance twenty-one nine fifty-three. It's the second reading, and we will have a public hearing before third reading. We approve the second reading. Second. The move is improperly seconded that we approve ordinance twenty-one nine fifty-three. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed? Community reports, budget workshops, special meetings. Nothing, Mr. Nixon? Okay, come now to a report.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to report on the, uh, COVID-nineteen special impact. Uh, I think you have been there now that, uh, what is the number? We have two hundred and six total number of people that have confirmed deaths in the county. Um, as I said, I keep a running tab of the number of veterans that have served in, in, in the military in Sumter, that have passed away. And my source of, of this is the Sumter Item Obituary. And since our last meeting, twelve more veterans have died, uh, since, uh, May the eleventh. Total now is one hundred and eleven veterans that have passed away in the last one hundred and sixty-eight days, which goes back to December the eighth, twenty-twenty. That's about every day and a half, thirty-six hours, a veteran dies. During the last report, um, two other veterans that passed away were very close friends of mine. Uh, they served in Vietnam. They were members of Sumter South Carolina Combat Veterans Organization as well as a peer-to-peer group that met every Tuesday to discuss issues and problems that they are having as a result of their service. Uh, out of those twelve that, that died, five of them served in Vietnam, which is where a lot of Vietnam veterans have contracted illnesses associated with a herbicide called Agent Orange. I'm very much aware of that because I contracted about all those illnesses associated with Agent Orange in my service in Southeast Asia. And as a result, uh, the VA rated one hundred percent disabled total affirmative. So I know what a lot of these vets are going through, and I talk to them, and we try to help each other. But I'm grateful that they are building a center here, a hospital for the veterans. And that, uh, we are going to approve an additional staff member for the Veteran Affairs Office here in, in Sumter to help us to expedite services to about thirteen hundred veterans that are here that, that services are delayed. Sometimes some of them die before they can get the services that they were entitled to or enjoy. But I will continue to report on the veterans. And like I said, uh, when someone close to me who I know passed away, it really has an impact on me. And, uh, I just appreciate the time to share it with you. Thank you.
Anyone else? My report, Mr. McGannan.
The Sheriff's Department information, I'm sorry, Sheriff's Office information is in your packet for the month of April. And also, I've already shown you the COVID report. I need to speak with each council member individually concerning the South Carolina Association of Townies Conference, which is coming up, and the Institute Classic.
Thank you, Mr. McGannan. Mr. Nixon, a report, sir?
Thank you.
Okay, come now to the public comment section of our meeting. Anyone wishing to address council, please proceed to the podium. State your name for the record. Please address your comments to me as chairman. Please don't be personal. You have three minutes. Public comment section is now open.
My name is Charlotte McGannan. I have a contract to sell for the property with Mr. Google for the construction of the Dollar Jones. This required the public property to be resigned at the dire- uh, at the direction of the planning department. That is why the issue was before canceled. It passed the first reading. There was no strong opposition, opposition station during the public hearing. It passed the second reading. The third and final reading was stopped by Mr. Washington in order for a meeting to be held which is surrounding the community to discuss the planned project before the final approval. Therefore, a meeting was arranged by Mr. Washington on my property from May the eighteenth at six P M. I showed that the schedule, I showed up and scheduled a meeting because it was being held on my property. And I felt that I had interest as a party because of the involvement of my land that would have an impact on my contract. Before the meeting, Mr. Washington informed me that I was not welcome at the meeting and that it was a private meeting. He asked me to leave my own property. I respected his wishes and left the property. However, I do not believe that this was an appropriate action for a council member, nor was it legal to call a meeting on my property and then not allow me to attend the meeting. Therefore, I'm here tonight to make sure that the entire council, including Chairman McCain and Attorney Brown, are made aware of these actions and the treatment towards me. I am a Sumter County citizen, and I do live in the same area, and I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Ms. McGannan. Anyone else wishing to address council? Seeing none, a second.